Call to order, City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1351, February 3, 2020. Let us stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call to order, please.
Brown.
Present.
Herbie.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Ness.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
To record show, all council members are present. Item 2 is minutes. You should have all gotten copies of the minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing, hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Next item on the agenda is presentations. We have three of those tonight. First presentation goes to former councilwoman Regina Collins.
On behalf of the City of Forest Park, we recognize Regina Collins for her outstanding dedication and loyal service as a member of City Council, December 1, 2015, to November 30, 2019. Thank you for your service.
Hello, citizens. As your former City of Forest Park Council member, I want you all to know just how proud I am to have served this term as your elected official and public servant. Forest Park is a wonderful place to live and work, and the very thought of my being a part of the body, privileged enough to listen to you and help run our city, truly warms my heart. To former City Council member David Lives, to Mayor of Evendale, Richard Finan, former Mayor of Lincoln Heights, Laverne Mitchell, and to Hamilton County Commissioner Stephanie Dumas, thank you for your personal instructions and words of wisdom. To Mr. Ray Hodges, former city manager of Forest Park, thank you for the many hours we spent debating public policy. Steel sharpens steel. To the council members whom I've had the pleasure to serve with, Charles Southall, Sheila Cottle, Diane Herbie, Wendell Burns, Denise Holt, Chelsea Ness, and Rosalyn Moore, you have made me see issues from your vantage point, and you have made me grow. Thank you so very much. Earlier this evening, we laid to rest County Commissioner Todd Portone, and it was such a wonderful tribute to him. And he was one of the people who, when I firstly became a City Councilwoman, he led the newly-elected official training. And I just thought it would be wonderful for me to pass on words of wisdom to our newest council members, what he said to me and to us newly-elected officials. Commissioner Portone said, "Local government is truly where the work gets done. Belief becomes acting, so believe in yourself. Be true to yourself, always do the right thing. There may be times when the right thing to do is not the majority view. Still, do the right thing even if you have to fight the majority. Don't let the negative noise run or ruin your life. When making decisions, listen to both the majority view and the minority view. Then trust your own intuition." Well, the Bible says, "Seek wise counsel and seek wisdom." I have always filed Commissioner Todd Portone under wise counsel. He was just so deep and deeply loved. Again, thank you to the Forest Park community for the opportunity to serve you, and thank you, City of Forest Park, for this plaque. I was truly looking forward to my getting one of these. And this is probably one of my most cherished awards. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. Oh, if we can, for each other. Well, personally, as one of the very few people and only folks that I met prior to me serving and running, it's been really an amazing journey. One thing I wanted to say is it is very, very difficult for people to have disagreements on the outside and behind closed. We don't agree on everything up here, okay, you guys? So to have such passionate disagreements that we were able to have, and then the next day to be able to work with each other and to speak and be cordial and move on is truly, you know, a character attribute of grace and professionalism. And so that I do very much appreciate.
Anyone else in council? The next presentation is Wendell Burns.
On behalf of the City of Forest Park and the City Council, I would like to present this plaque to Mr. Wendell Burns for outstanding dedication and loyal service as a member of City Council, June 27, 2005, to November 30, 2019. Thanks for deserting me.
So first of all, I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity to be here. As you saw before the dash, I wasn't elected initially. I was appointed in July of 2005. And it was an appointment where I actually got to meet future council members that I actually ran against. And it was an honor to be in their presence and working with them because I had just moved to Forest Park maybe two years prior. So to be selected out of very solid individuals who had been working in Forest Park and living in Forest Park most of their life, if not all of their life, is my honor to be here. I wanted to share, for the sake of the new council members, what I share with the old council members because it's important to me that you know how I represent you and think of you as well as the City of Forest Park. And it's from a letter from Paul. "We always thank God for all of you and continually mention you in our prayers, my prayers. We remember before our God and our Father, your work produced by faith, your labor prompted by love, and your endurance inspired by hope in our Lord Jesus Christ." And I share that with you because the spirit in which you work on behalf of the people of Forest Park should be inspired by something greater than yourself. Right? Not your own individual interests, although they come, and you can't deny that. However, the majority of your spirit and energy should come from something greater than what you represent individually. And I think this particular beginning of the letter helps to kind of frame that, right? Your love, your faith is important. And if you can keep that, you'll always be on the northern path, straight and narrow. So thank you again for this. Thank you for the opportunity to serve, and thank you, Forest Park, for continuing to support me through all the years that I was here.
And for Mr. Wendell Burns, it was, I have to say something. I mean, it was fun. Also, you know, when we had different meetings and things like that, it was really nice to learn from you in terms of how you led those meetings, conducted it with, you know, with civility and professionalism and making sure that everyone was heard means a lot. And I certainly took notes, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Next presentation, Mr. David Lives. Forest Park City Council recognizes Dave Lives for outstanding dedication and loyal service to the City of Forest Park as a member of the Stormwater Management Utility Board of Directors, May 19, 2008, through August 6, 2019. David?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the honor of receiving this plaque. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that this is one of all the council committees and activities that I was involved in. I started, when was it, 13 years ago? And a person that's not here in spirit, but I miss talked me into doing it, my wife Kathy. And I'm sure she's looking down on this and going, "You're not doing it right." Because I used to get that when I'd get home from a council meeting. But the time I spent with council was rather rewarded by being able to help neighbors, friends, and assorted other people in the City of Forest Park. And of course, the main thing was to make Forest Park the best suburban area to live, work, and play in. And I think, I look out over the new people here, I think you're on the right track. It sounds like we're continuing to move, and I look forward to working with you if there's anything I can do to help. Thank you, everyone.
Just a few words. First of all, I want to extend my thanks and congratulations to the three of you. Regina, I served less time on council with you than anyone else of the three. And while we didn't always disagree, we agreed to disagree. As far as Mr. Burns and Mr. Lives, I don't separate them that much because we spent so much time and so many years doing this together. I think Dave Lives was on council a year or 18 months before me, and he had a break, so we always talked about which one of us had been around longest. Wendell, as he said, came as an appointed replacement. It's a little bit like, you know, when you have an adopted child. You know, if you have one biologically, you kind of struggle with what you got. But when you adopt one, or in this case, appoint one, you get to pick. We, Dave and I and others, we got to pick Wendell. And there was really no questions or issues about who we was going to pick. It was a matter of looking at them all and then going through the formality of it. I've learned so much from these two gentlemen. Not only learned from them, but, you know, I've been taken down a peg or two by them on a number of occasions when I needed to be. So I thank them both for that. And most importantly, I thank them for their continued service to Forest Park in both capacities, as stormwater and council. And Mr. Burns is a council member and liaison to school district. And the one thing that I think, and maybe most of the citizens don't know this, we have a very, very, very good agreement with Rumpke and Solid Waste. And Wendell is more responsible for that than anybody. So every month, or however often you get it now, when you get your bill for Solid, from Rumpke, you can say a silent thank you for Mr. Burns because you save money every single month, and you've done that every single month for, how many years is it now? 10? For all those years, thanks primarily to him. So to both of you, again, thank you for your service, and we really appreciate it. And the last thing I'll say is even more than that, since they've been gone, it's not like I still don't call upon them for their advice. And they still give it to me. And they still tell me, "Chuck, you're wrong on that one." Thank you, guys, all of you. And now we go to the good part, and that being, this is a time for communications from the public. But before we get to that, as usual, for those of you who need to leave or feel, you know, you're welcome to stay, but don't feel that you have to. So we'll take a little break here. For those who wish to leave, can leave. Okay, communication from the public. This is a time for citizens to come in on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. Recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comment or question. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to five minutes. Come forward and sign in, tell us who you are and what your issue is. Mr. B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't see the sign-in sheet, but... Yeah. But my name's Wendell Burns. I live at 1532 Winfor Court, Mill Road Station 2, Phase 2. And I'm coming to council because of an event that occurred in our neighborhood on February 1 at roughly 11:30 PM on Saturday, February 1. And I've already talked to the city manager related to this issue. However, I wanted to present this today. And I'll just read the letter, the email I sent to the city manager. And it says, "I'm following up on a discussion I had with Donnie today regarding complaints on the majority of the major party at 1582 Winfor Court on Saturday, February 1, which resulted in at least two or more police dispatches and multiple units addressing the issue. I reviewed the ordinances and provided my thoughts below. One of my neighbors canvassed the neighborhood today, and I'm sure he's going to get up and speak too, and several people reported the following. And I just gave you four points, and there was probably more. Roughly two doors down in the Phase 1 section of Mill Road Station, two girls were caught urinating behind someone's home. Liquor bottles and debris throughout the neighborhood, along the parking areas and pathways to 1582 Winfor Court in Section 1 and Section 2 of Mill Road Station were found. And very congested parking on both sides of Winston Circle in Phase 1 and 2, up and down the northern, up and down the corridors of Williamson. Parking was on both sides of the street. There were over 300 people interviewed during the police response to this particular issue. One thing to note is that the owner of this house, in my opinion, is in violation of R1 zoning, primarily because of a couple of reasons, and I've given you the ordinances in the email. But they're infringing on the potential qualification of a hotel based on the number of rooms that are in that home. There are five rooms qualified in that home. They're listed on Airbnb for six rooms, one of which is a basement room with no window egress nor a walkout. So that's a fire code violation. We've dealt with that before when I sat on the same desk that you are today. They're advertising this, as I said before. And so there are several ordinances, one of which is a nuisance ordinance, I think, that may apply here. The other is also potentially the advertising events without a license or permit, as well as others in Section 99 of the ordinances, Section 150 of the ordinances as well. Specifically in 150.32, related to prohibited accessory use. Which is one point in line seven of that. The use is specifically related to the owner or the resident of the home and no one else. In this case, the renter is, or the, what's the word I would like to use? The temporary tenant, right, is not the owner. They don't qualify for residency because they haven't been here, according to code, for 30 days or more. So they are not a resident of that property. They are not a resident of this community. If they are, not at that address. So they're conducting rental space via Airbnb with greater than five rooms, which is part of the definition of a hotel, which means they're in business, which is in violation of code, which is also a violation of our covenant. So why do I say all this? I say this because I would like your consideration in this issue. I would also like to see a member of staff at our pending HOA meeting, which I think is the 9th of February, if I'm not mistaken, to discuss this issue because it is a community issue. It's not necessarily an issue of council. It's an issue of application of ordinance. And I would like to make sure that this is addressed in concert with our application of our covenant because I would think that there would probably be a cease and desist that comes based on our interpretation of our covenant. But I want to make sure it's a coordinated effort so that we get the biggest and most positive result. Thank you, and I hope I didn't exhaust my time.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm sure there are other people who want to speak to this issue. But before you do, let me just tell you what we've already done, what's been done already, and what is going to, more things that are going to be done. It's, some of us just found out about this when we got to the meeting tonight because we obviously have council members who live over in that area, and Mr. Burns had already said that. Conversations have been held with our attorney. Conversations have been had with the city manager, Mr. Anderson, the community development director. And in addition to the violations that you just mentioned, Mr. Burns, there are several others that are out there that would be probabilities also. As you know, Mr. Burns, and for the rest of your benefit, from time to time over the years, we've had situations where people have used their homes for, quote, "public-private parties." This has a little different twist. In the past, those parties were held in people's homes with the people there, charging an entry fee, charging for alcohol, and we've put a stop to those, as we will with this one. This one, as I said, is a little different because it's our understanding at this point that the owner of the property does not live on the property. Basically, he or she is running a business, an online business. That property is not zoned for that. So there are zoning violations to be considered. Their alcohol is being served and sold, probably sold and served. We're not certain, but we will find out. There's also a good possibility that there are minors who attend in this event who may or may not have been sold alcohol, which is also illegal. I'm saying these things just so you know, we will not tolerate this behavior from anybody in any house, in any situation. People have a right to be safe, and not only safe, but you have a right to your privacy as well as those people who are infringing upon it. And we're going to take every possible action as quickly as we possibly can to stop this action. It may, the initial action may be an injunction of some kind that would be left to John. But in the long haul, these people are going to pay. They're going to pay in terms of fines because there are many things that I can see there that are probably finable. And in terms of nuisance, if it comes to us or if we can, we will declare that property a nuisance. But John will advise us on which direction to go. And all through the process, you know, I can assure you that the homeowners association will be kept apprised of what we're doing all along the way. So I don't want you to feel like you're out there by yourselves and having to deal with this alone. This does affect everybody because if it's allowed to happen in one part of the city, it'll happen in others. And it's our intent for this not to become a staple in Forest Park. So I can assure you that this is not something that's going to be put on the back burner at all. We're going to deal with this right now, as quickly as we can and as forcefully as we can. So with that, I would ask if anyone else has, wants to come up and speak, please just come and sign in, and we'll hear what you have to say.
Good evening, and thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity. My name is Donna Weber. I live at 11882 Winston Circle. I have been a member of this community since 1974, when my husband and I first married and moved here. This is our third home in Forest Park. So I am a longstanding member of the community, although I may not have been very visible in the community in that sense. My issue probably has nothing to do with council, but nonetheless, it's an interesting facet, I think, to the situation. This summer, when the house was being rehabbed, the grass got extremely high. I assume someone finally got them to cut it, which we appreciated. Their backyard and our backyard abut up against one another. We have a dog, always had a dog. So we had one of the required fences for our HOA put in when we moved in. The person rehabbing, who hired the person to do the cutting, that person ran into our fence and damaged it. We approached the workers, eventually got to the person who was supposed to be in charge, and she said she would take care of it. Gave us phone number, which was invalid. So when the house went on the market, I decided to call the realtor and ask if there was any way he could get me in contact with the owner so that we could maybe get this handled as good neighbors. According to the auditor's site, this house was purchased in May 2019. The incident happened in July or August of 2019. So the owner, the present owner, in my opinion, is responsible for the damage incurred on our property. I was very dismayed to find this out after talking to the realtor, who informed me that the person who owned it now is not the person who owned it at the time of damages. That is very disconcerting to me. I come from a Christian background, and I think that truth and honesty is very important. I did not appreciate being lied to. I approached the situation, my husband and I, in a neighborly fashion. I do not feel we were reciprocated in kind. And like I said, while I don't really believe this is an issue for council, I think it's an interesting facet to the case. And I just wanted to put in my opinion and our position. And I thank you very much for your time this evening.
Oh, we thank you. And unfortunately, it's that particular side of it. It's not an issue that, uh, it would be a civil issue between the parties. And I don't know, and I, yeah, I do know, I know that our city attorney could not give advice on that matter to someone. But as you said, it is an interesting notation in that it's one of the things that we will have to look at when we're looking at who owns it now and when, and how long that person has owned it. Is that person now, who supposedly owns it now, is the true owner or is it a shadow owner? Those are the kind of things we'd have to look at too. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council on this matter?
Are you in phase one or phase two? Are you in phase one or two?
I'm sorry, phase two.
Are you in two?
Anyone else who'd like to address the council on this issue?
Hi, my name is Tammy McCarty. We just moved into the neighborhood in October. We're at fifteen eighty-one Winford Court, which is directly across the street. So Saturday, I was sitting with my daughter and who's, is seventeen years old. And she got a screenshot of an invitation on Instagram from some of her friends. And they said, "Isn't this across the street from your house?" And she showed me, showed me the address and I pulled it up and I said, "Yes, the street, this is directly across the street." Well, so because she was curious, her and a couple of her friends decided to go over to the party when it was initially started. So as they were approaching, they said, "Hmm, this may not be the place for us." As they walked in, the aroma was so intense that they immediately just swung around and came back out. But the music, the bass, we could hear prominently in our house, in our bedroom. Like, it was so loud. And I was really shocked by it. Like, what is this? Like, is this really what we did? This is how we moved in to this new neighborhood? I've been a resident of Forest Park since nineteen eighty. Went to Forest Park High School and graduated. Moved away for a bit but came back. And we decided to buy the house over there. It was just so, we thought, a great experience. So it was shocking, to say the least. So it's good to hear that you, everybody is involved in it and we hope to have some kind of resolution for it. That's all.
Thank you.
Can we, can we get a copy of that screenshot that you have? And also, if you don't mind, maybe the name, at least your name and contact information, but your daughter's as well in case we want to talk to people who are actually there. So that would be much appreciated.
How would you, like, for me, I mean, it's...
Uh, if you, can you print it or can you send it? I don't know if you can text it or...
I can, I can text it.
Okay. I'll give you my phone. Can you, can you email it to the city? I don't know how that works. I'm not an Instagram person.
I think I can email it. I just needed someone's...
This is part of the reason that I'm on council now. Yeah, you can send it Gmail. And then, um, Tom, what is your direct email?
D R Jones.
Okay, D R.
At forestpark.org.
Yes, spelled out, forestpark.org. And you should be able to just send it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. You know what else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Eric Cross. I work, I'm at fifteen thirty-seven Winford Court. And I'm the one that basically brought everybody together here. I just wanted to say thank you to all my neighbors. Because, I mean, I actually met a lot of neighbors that I don't know as a result. I was just really concerned just because of the fact, and I'm up late watching TV, and I see all these blue lights, which never happens in our neighborhood. And I go outside and I start seeing, like, just a lot of people. And I could tell they were younger people. So, you know, and this happened up until two-thirty in the morning. And, uh, you know, my, my biggest concern, like, I was talking to everybody about this, is just the fact that I'm just glad, I work at Channel Five. So I'm just glad that nothing awry went, you know, because you got all these young people out there. You know, some of them carry guns and things like that. And here we have somebody in our neighborhood that basically used this place as an Airbnb and is just two hundred and eighty-nine dollars a night, you know, renting this out to just anybody, you know, in our neighborhood. So I'm just glad, I'm just glad to hear everything that you guys are, you know, saying that you're gonna take action on. You know, because it just, you know, when I was told by one of the officers what was going on, you know, they said, "Well, it's an Airbnb." And I said, "What do you mean, an Airbnb?" You know, and then they explained it to me. I was like, "No." And they showed me on an app, the Airbnb app, where it is, you know, in this advertisement. So I just want to thank everybody for, you know, taking part and taking care of this. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Quickly, just, I don't want to belabor the point, but we do appreciate all, everything you're bringing to us. And we're gonna, you'll see me on the ninth at your HOA meeting, so I guarantee I'll be there. And we'll probably bring Chris as well. Oh, see, well, I'd be there on the ninth and the nineteenth. The, um, one of the things that, one of the programs that we're getting ready to institute or expand on is a rental registration, vacant property registration, and foreclosure registration. Council, they don't know it yet. We've had some discussions, but we're ready to bring forth some legislation that will, once we check with John to make sure it's all good. And we have a vendor already that will help manage that program for us. So it's a priority for the city. And it may not have stopped something like this, but it sure would have given us a heads up to let them, to let us know that, 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 number one, that Airbnb existed and do whatever we can do to keep that from happening again. So our apologies, and we look forward to putting an end to this right now.
Okay. I want to thank you all for not just coming here, but we can only be as effective as our citizens helped us to be in a lot of cases. Unfortunately, all too often, people don't want to get involved. People don't want to point things out or to give information out, for whatever reason, any, any number of reasons. But the more we know and the sooner we know it, the sooner we can start setting things right. So from the council here, we want to thank you for letting us, for letting us know what's going on in your, in your neighborhood, in your community. And not just in, on this occasion, which is a biggie, but even on much smaller, much smaller scales. And especially like to you, you know, even though the totality of what your issue was, we may not be able to deal with, but the grass problem that you were talking about, that's something that we could have and would have dealt with. You may have seen around the city, the big black and yellow signs that you gotta cut your grass or we're gonna be finding you. Some things that, you know, even, don't ever think a problem is too small or, you know, that it's not something that we, that we want to hear about or want to deal with. Because when one neighborhood is made better, then the city is made better. So again, I want to thank all of you for taking your time and making the effort to bring this to our attention as well as for coming here tonight. Anybody else? Anything else? Sir, just on a note, I didn't get your name when you said... And you, you said you were a, you were a Channel Five as a videographer. I thought, I thought I recognized you, one of my friends just retired from there as a videographer, Rob Busby. And I think I saw you with him on a job somewhere. Okay. Again, thank you all. And again, you're welcome to stay, but if you need to leave or want to leave, feel free. And as I said before, you can be certain that we will let you know what's going on every step of the way. Thank you. The advertising, the advertising for that thing?
That's amazing.
It is. I'm telling you. Okay, we will now move on to item number five, reports of standing committee. The first of these would be Ways and Means, Councilwoman Herbie.
I have no report at this time.
Councilwoman, are there any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Councilwoman Herbie, we have two items on the agenda for you for the work session on the tenth. Redevelopment Ascendive Project for Caroline and Enterprise Zone Agreement Project Caroline. Do you have anything to add?
No, I do not.
Next committee report is Community Development Committee, Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to acknowledge We Thrive in the Winton Woods School District. We were in the Cincinnati Enquirer regarding our service to the community, so we're very proud of that. Also, I want to recognize Officer Rebecca Davis. She and I were invited to a community engagement session at Forest Chapel yesterday, right before the Super Bowl. But we just want to acknowledge her dedication and hard work. On a Sunday, she's off and she's committed to our community. And so we're very proud of all the work she's done. And, um, and so I just wanted to acknowledge that in the We Thrive and all our hard work in the community. Rebecca completes my report.
Any questions for Councilwoman Moore? Councilwoman Moore, I have no items on the agenda for the work session for you. Do you have anything to add?
Um, no, I do not.
Next committee is Law Committee, Councilman Brown.
There are no reports at this time.
Questions for Councilman Brown? Councilman Brown, I have no items for you. Do you have anything to add?
No, I do not.
Next committee report is Human Resources, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a report tonight. Thank you.
Any questions for her? I do not have any items for you to have any to add.
No, I do not. Thanks.
Next committee is Public Improvement and Facilities, Councilman Sylvester.
I have no report at this time, Eric.
Any questions for Councilman Sylvester? I have one item on the agenda for you for the meeting on the tenth, and that's Rights of Way Fees adjustments. Do you have anything to add? Rights of Way Fee adjustments. Do you have anything to add? Next committee report is Public Safety, Councilwoman Ness.
I do not have a report at this time, but a couple acknowledgements and just notes. On February eleventh, there will be a community job fair that will be held at the Winton Woods High School. That is from six o'clock to seven-thirty PM. A few months back, I submitted a letter through EDC and shared with council and you all about the minority business initiative that was launched. I'm really happy to announce that we have our first Entrepreneurs Roundtable meeting. It will be on Sunday, February sixteenth. It'll take place at six PM at Forest Park's Park Place Restaurant. Minority women and veteran entrepreneurs are invited to attend so that we can discuss our mission, the initiative, the mission of this initiative, of course, listening from you. And this, of course, is all in an effort to make sure that the policies that we submit to EDC or recommendations in the city reflect and meet the true needs of our residents and, most importantly, create guidelines that can help spawn minority economic inclusion. We also welcome people to join our committee. And you can still email us at nuss, N-U-A-S-C, at forestpark.org. We appreciate the people that have joined and will be present there as well. And this Saturday is Gals in Government. I'm excited and honored to be able to share, you know, experiences coming from a young lady. I'm a millennial and to help young ladies see themselves in government, to help young ladies also know that they can be a voice for the things that they're passionate about and how they can help shape public policy. My hope would be that we can, we can gather some young ladies here from Forest Park to take next year with us, at least three of them. So if you're interested in that, please let us know about that as well. And then, lastly, Chat with Chelsea will be on Sunday, the sixteenth, at four o'clock PM at Park Place as well. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Ness? There are none. Councilwoman Ness, I have no items on the agenda for you to have any to add.
I do not.
Next committee report is Internal Government Relation and Communication. That is my committee. I have no, no report. There will be, on the agenda for the work session, we will continue our discussions of rules of council. The two primary areas that we're gonna be looking at would be the agendas of Councilwoman Moore and Human Resources with Councilwoman Holt. I will answer any questions if there are any. There are none. We'll next move to item number six, the mayor's report. I have no specific reports. Again, I would, but I would like to thank the members of council for their expressions of condolences for my, the loss of my sister-in-law. And again, I want to thank you all for that. In my report, I'll answer any questions if there are any. Next report, next item is item number seven, the city manager's report. Mr. Jones.
Well, we have a few things I want to bring to everyone's attention. First thing I did pass out for everyone is this little flyer here. It basically asks the question, "Are you ready to buy?" And part of our initiative for this year is working in neighborhoods. And we're partnering with an organization called Working in Neighborhoods. It's a local nonprofit, and they'll be presenting a buyers, home buyers, either you, if you're in the market, if you want to be a home buyer, just anybody's invited. They're gonna try and teach people how to buy a home, what it takes to buy a home. They're gonna explain what you will need to determine, you know, whether you're mortgage-ready. They're going to do, be doing classes in budgeting and new buyer assistance programs. So it's at the, it's at the senior center on Tuesday, February the eighteenth, at six PM, and everyone's invited. If you want to own a home, you don't know much about it, and you're a first-time home buyer, or even if you're a longtime home buyer, there's information that can help you. And we hope to partner with this organization to bring homeowners assistance and promote single-family home ownership in our community. So this will be the first of many things that they'll be producing and presenting classes in with the city. And we think it's gonna be a very, a very worthwhile project for, not only for us, but for our citizens as well. It's tax filing season beginning today. So don't forget about your, when you're getting your federal and your state, don't forget about your local taxes. Snow removal, it's that time again. I'm gonna, I'm gonna jinx this. I think I talked about it one time and it snowed on Thursday or whatever. So I think I'm gonna be quiet. But we're gonna be, again, we're pointing people to our website for snow removal information. But we're also gonna do a little podcast with a video on Wednesday with our, with our public work staff to talk about how we do snow removal, what, the programs we use, the ice, the products, and things that homeowners and folks who... and, uh, uh, folks who, who live here and work here, uh, can do to help us remove snow, whether it's getting cars off, what they need to know, so we're gonna do a little video, probably be five to ten minutes, so we'll point you, uh, to the website if you want to read about it, or we'll also have, uh, after, after Wednesday, we'll have a nice, uh, little video podcast that we'll be able to, uh, present. Hopefully we'll never have to use it, but, uh, we're gonna put it out there 'cause it's that time of the year. The, um, uh, we've been planning for Jazz Fest, which is August the first this year, so plan your calendars, we're looking for volunteers, we need volunteers for everything we're going to do this year, whether it's if you want to be involved in Jazz Fest, please give the city hall a call and we'll be, uh, or go to our, go to our website, look up, send us an email, uh, we'll be glad to, uh, put you as part of the group. One of, one of the other things that I, I think we can announce, it may be a little premature, but, uh, we are working with the symphony orchestra to bring them back to a Forest Park, and I believe we'll have, uh, some announcements here in the next couple of months, but any, um, we're looking to bring them in probably as part of their, um, summer series and hopefully it'll be a re, a reoccurring event and, uh, we look forward to, uh, basically having, uh, two really, uh, really high-class and, uh, professional, um, shows that will, uh, you know, just showcase not only, you know, the symphony and the jazz, and the, and the music, but also our city as a place where you can, uh, in terms of the amenities, these are, these are things that, uh, that our, our citizens, I think, want and really enjoy, so keep an eye out for that date, we haven't finalized it yet. Also, we'll be hoping to, um, work with the schools since they are, uh, you know, they're really well, well-known for their, their, um, their music program, make them, we want to incorporate them as part of this as well, so we'll be working with the schools to, uh, hopefully bring some of the, the core group or some of the other, um, uh, kids that, uh, that are at the Wynton Woods High School to, uh, to, uh, come up and play or perform with the pops. The, uh, finally, uh, we're also beginning planning for our sickle cell anemia five K walk run, which was a tremendous success last year, uh, the meeting will be, uh, I believe it's, I think it's next week, we'll be planning and finalizing a date, uh, but we'll be able to, uh, bring more information again, if you want to get a team together, get a team together, if you're a corporation or a business, get a, get a team together, if you're individuals, get your neighbors together, get that whole street section that was down here just a few minutes ago and, uh, in your neighborhood and, uh, come out and support a, a, a worthy cause and, um, it's a community event and, uh, we hope to make it bigger and better and, uh, so again, that, that date will be coming, but we're just starting that planning process, we'll need volunteers and we need participants, so finally, the last thing, um, from council standpoint, we, uh, we normally have our bi-weekly reports that are issued by the department heads, we, we are going to a more of a, a monthly report where it'd be more formalized, monthly report, things just don't change a lot every two weeks, um, but if something, I'll be updating council every two weeks, obviously, at every council meeting, so it'll be more of a verbal report, um, with a, with a more formalized, uh, monthly report that will, uh, we hope will be a better, better, um, better way to, to transmit information, um, but, uh, obviously if, take input from city council in, in, in terms of what they want to see in those reports and, uh, hopefully we can customize it to, uh, to better, be a, a better vehicle to, um, not only to the, to the city council, but to the public in terms of, um, information that might be basically more, more in turn, in tune with what they want and what they, what they desire, so look for those and our first monthly one will be at the next, at the next council meeting.
Any questions for the city manager? Hearing none, I think we'll move to item number eight, other reports, first of those being Law Director, Mr. Wykrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things to report on, our police department, uh, recently has been doing a great job on cleaning out their, uh, inventory, uh, from unused property or, or, uh, abandoned property, criminal property, whatever it might be, and for us to dispose of that, I have to file petitions with the court, which I've done and I've gotten orders, one petition is for, uh, the disposal of the personal property, whether it's an old Walkman or a Nintendo or a book, whatever, bicycles, that type of thing, uh, the other is for requests that's been granted to destroy drugs and guns that we have as inventory, so we've got that accomplished and, uh, the orders have been signed by the judges. Also, uh, I had an opportunity to review and approve a release being used by our police department, they're going to be, uh, having a warrior academy over at the school, a more in-depth look at the police department and operations, and so I've reviewed the release for approval for any of the people who participate. That would be into my report, I didn't answer any questions, should there be some?
Questions for Law Director? Hearing none, thank you, sir, next report Clerk of Council, Mr. Boyd.
I'd like to report that resolution numbers zero three dash twenty twenty through zero five dash twenty twenty and ordinance number zero two dash twenty twenty were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Questions for Clerk of Council? Hearing none, thank you, means item number nine, motion, Councilwoman Herbie.
I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the second time by title only, ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the second time by title only, ordinance number zero one twenty twenty, is there any discussion?
Just that it was posted as required.
Hearing no other, uh, would the clerk call the role on the motion to suspend?
Brown?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes seven zero, next item on the agenda is unfinished business is item A, ordinance number zero one twenty twenty, would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty, an ordinance amending chapter thirty general provisions of the codified ordinances of the city of Forest Park as it relates to posting places.
Is there a motion, Mr. Brown?
Uh, yes, as mentioned above, section thirty dot zero two. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I, I move that, uh, we accept the motion, uh, for ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty, discussion, Mr. Brown?
Yes, uh, as, as mentioned above, section thirty dot oh, zero two of the Forest Park Code of Ordinances designates the five official posting places of the city for items required to be posted by law such as ordinances, resolutions, proclamations, notices, reports, et cetera, um, this ordinance would remove Main Street Market as a posting place and establish Kroger as the new posting place since Main Street Market has been out of business for many years, um, staff recommends approval of this resolution, um, please note that ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty was posted six days prior to the meeting and was read for the first time at, uh, the January twenty first, twenty nineteen council meeting.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the role on ordinance number zero one twenty twenty?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance zero one twenty twenty passes seven zero, next item on the agenda is item ten, new business, there are motion, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolution numbers zero six twenty twenty and zero seven twenty twenty by title only.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolution number zero six twenty twenty and zero seven twenty twenty by title only, is there any discussion? Hearing no further discussion, would the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend the rules?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Resolution zero six twenty twenty passes seven zero, next item is item B, resolution number zero seven dash twenty twenty, the clerk please read this resolution by title only.
Resolution number zero seven dash twenty twenty, a resolution to revise the purchasing policy as it relates to competitive bidding requirements for the city of Forest Park.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I move adoption of resolution number zero seven dash twenty twenty.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution number zero six dash twenty twenty, is there discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, um, the city currently has a triggering, uh, uh, number of thirty-five thousand dollars for formally advertising and seeking competitive bids for purchases, and, um, the state of Ohio has a revised code, has a fifty thousand dollar trigger, which many other cities in Ohio are using, so staff is recommending that we increase, uh, our limit from thirty-five thousand to fifty thousand, we think that this may give more opportunity to smaller businesses, um, to, including perhaps minority and, and women-owned businesses to compete for, uh, contracts for city, small city projects, so I would urge adoption of this, uh, uh, resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk please call the role on resolution zero seven dash twenty twenty.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Resolution zero six twenty twenty passes seven zero, next item is item B, resolution number zero seven dash twenty twenty, the clerk please read this resolution by title only.
Resolution number zero seven dash twenty twenty, a resolution to revise the purchasing policy as it relates to competitive bidding requirements for the city of Forest Park.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I move adoption of resolution number zero seven dash twenty twenty.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution zero seven twenty twenty, is there discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, um, the city currently has a triggering, uh, uh, number of thirty-five thousand dollars for formally advertising and seeking competitive bids for purchases, and, um, the state of Ohio has a revised code, has a fifty thousand dollar trigger, which many other cities in Ohio are using, so staff is recommending that we increase, uh, our limit from thirty-five thousand to fifty thousand, we think that this may give more opportunity to smaller businesses, um, to, including perhaps minority and, and women-owned businesses to compete for, uh, contracts for city, small city projects, so I would urge adoption of this, uh, uh, resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the role on resolution zero seven dash twenty twenty?
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Resolution zero seven dash twenty twenty passes seven zero, is there any further business to come before the body? Any further business to come before the body? Hearing none, we adjourn.